All right, thank you all for joining us this evening. Today is Monday, August 15th, 2022. The time is 6:00 PM. At this time, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Neal.
Here.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cortez.
Here.
And Mayor Walter is here. At this time, we'll go ahead and stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. At this time, we have our first call to the public this evening. We do have one public request at this time. Ms. Kathy Adam, if you would like to speak in your online, please raise your hand and we will allow you in. And if you're in person and you have not filled out one of these request forms, please fill one out for Ms. Garcia. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me speak. I put on the topic tonight, the whole agenda. I am so positive about what's going on in Florence, and I'd like to start with the recent election. And hats off to all the candidates. I thought it was a really well-run candidacy. I was pleased to see the content that everyone talked about. I did not get any negative stuff in my mail, which is, has happened in the past. And again, I congratulate everyone. I think they ran a terrific race. I remember when I came here, Vicky Kilvinger told me that they never had signs. And I think we had a minimum of signs. You have to have some, but I think people really ran on content and getting out on meeting people. So I congratulate those of you who are joining the council. And I'd like to say, Judy Hughes, thank you very much. I have known you since you got the highest number of members in our chamber. I have hanging in my living room wall, my Brooklyn Bridge, which I bought from your store, and all the work you've done on council. So thank you. The other things on council tonight, I think recognizing Curtis, who is a downtown hero, is wonderful. Territory Square, I remember when it was the first draft. So to have it being presented to council is very, very exciting. And the rodeo grounds, Bill Foster stepping up, there's so much good stuff going on. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during the first call to the public? Seeing no such movement, we're closing the first call to the public. Item 6A, presentations. Curtis Williams did have an unexpected event occur, and so we are going to be honoring him at the next council meeting. We want to make sure that he is here so he can receive the award. Item 6B is our update on the North End Framework Vision Plan, Territory Square. At this time, I'd like to call forward Mr. Harvey Kraus.
Thank you, Mayor Walter, Vice Mayor, members of the town council. I have the pleasure this evening giving you an update on the Territory Square project that's been in the works for several years. This item's for information only, and we'll be coming back to you at a later date after you provide direction and input into it, the plans tonight. So the purpose of the presentation is to give you a little bit of background information about the project, a little brief historical overview. It's kind of ironic that the new guy is giving you history on this project, and then give you where we are today, progress to date. And then we'll turn it over to Jay Hicks, who is leading the consultant team with Dig Studio, and he will walk you through the master plan for the project. And then we'll talk about the next steps involved in the project, and some key decisions that need to be made by the town council if they want to continue pursuing this project. So this is a map from 2009 that was presented to the council when the project was initially started, and goes east of Plant Road to SR 79 and south of the Gila River, in and around the downtown area. Really, the discussion began several years ago, and the town held a series of community workshops, which culminated in a plan in 2009, which was endorsed by the town council in 2011. It was officially called the North End Framework Vision Plan, but I will refer to it as Territory Square, which is easier to pronounce. And it was adopted, actually, one of the recommendations that was in the Territory Square was to adopt a zoning district to guide the development of the downtown area, site development, design standards, civic open space. And it culminated in the development of this book. And this book is very conceptual. It provides conceptual land use plan, densities, setbacks, site development standards, a whole, the kind of quality of development that the town and the community desired at the time. And then that was in 2012. It was presented to the town council and adopted and incorporated by reference as a zoning district. And then in 2013, the town council actually adopted, changed the zoning on the property in the Territory Square from Plant Road, east to State Route 79 and south of the Gila River, to what is known as Territory Square District Zoning. So that is the zoning that currently exists. And then in the subsequent years, there was development. The Windmill Winery had a considerable amount of success and grew, and the owner, Harold Chris, who's here this evening, initiated a rezoning on 40 acres at the southeast corner of Butte and Plant Road. And the town council in 2016 rezoned that property also to Territory Square. So that was to complement the Windmill Winery and any other auxiliary uses that could come out of that use. So early this year, the staff initiated a project to take what is in this plan and put more details to it, because especially infrastructure, the sizing of utilities, the land use densities and intensities, the roadway network. We didn't have a handle on how much it was going to cost, and where the roads were going to go, and what the size of utilities were. So the staff had the foresight to get a consultant team together, as well as staff, and they determined what the densities and intensities of each land use category was. And the consultant took this conceptual plan and transformed it into a more detailed, comprehensive development plan, which can be used for development phasing. Actually, he came up with, I believe, 12 phases over a 20-year period. So from that, from this infrastructure plans on water, sewer, roadways, landscaping, we can determine what the cost at buildout of the Territory Square project would be. It's a long-term project. So Dig Studio transformed this plan into something we could really work with, and was supported by CivTech and Westland Resources, who provided some technical support on utilities. And the council reviewed the draft plan in March and this year, and asked staff to meet with project stakeholders and affected landowners, which I understand the staff did, and received endorsement of the plan by the stakeholders and the landowners. So at this time, we have the development master plans to provide to you, showing the infrastructure requirements at buildout, phasing of development, and we will be determining those cost estimates at a later date. Just to note that there was money budgeted in this year for floodplain mitigation measures of approximately $1.5 million. So tonight, you'll hear a presentation from Jay Hicks. We will ask to come back at a later date and present the development plans and the development phasing strategy to you at a future council meeting, and determine how much financial participation, if any, the council and the town want to invest in seeding the project. So without further ado, I'll introduce Jay Hicks, who, then you can ask Jay and myself questions afterwards.
You got me? All right, thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jay Hicks with Dig Studio, and I was fortunate to work with the staff of basically developing your initial image, or basically the illustrative, that Mr. Kraus went over a few minutes ago into a framework plan to give the city or the town some guidance overall. So the Territory Square, what I want to do is go through, it's a fairly high level, even though the master plan has a lot of detail in it, it's much more, it's too detailed to go into tonight. So I want to give you just a high level on the framework, and then some of the aspects of the plan itself. So the illustrative plan that's on the screen right now is what Mr. Kraus was really talking about. This was generated by a pretty extensive outreach that was done some time ago. But, so what really came out of it was a true image of what this could really be. And I have to give you all credit for having the foresight to really look at the north end as far as being able to actually, one, purchase the property, but the other two is to really get the citizens involved to really make this a plan. And I think this was a really good starting point. And so what we ended up doing was, we took a look at this, and we started adding a little more detail to each one. Let me get to the right thing here. And so we just started taking the illustrative and putting major uses. So for example, the residential use, or the civic office mixed use. And we just bid very large, what I always call like bubble diagrams, on top the illustrative. That gave us at least the starting information to where we could actually start putting together your framework plans. We start talking about the different aspects. When we talk about the framework plan, I really want to talk about what the overall concept is, not only for the land that the town actually owns, but also the adjacent land that this may influence. And actually, the town land itself is really something that's seen almost as a catalyst. I work with different municipalities throughout the valley. And one of the things, anytime a town goes out and really develops, or actually takes it upon themselves to buy property, a lot of times it's to really start a development in the right direction that they want to see. So that's sort of the lens that we took through the entire framework plan. And so there's three main elements that I want to go through on the framework. One is the roadway, the other one is the open space, and the third is really your pedestrian and bikeway systems. So it really does start talking about, you know, the framework itself. And I talk about the framework, it literally is that high-level framework. So we first want to talk about the roadway system, the streetscape, basically the street network. So we looked at not only the illustrative plan, but we also looked at your existing infrastructure. Obviously, we looked at Ranch View, we also looked at Main Street, and we tried to keep those in somewhat the same location, even though there may be a little bit of adjustment as it makes its turn at the upper northwest corner. We also, was very important to understand what this cross connection's going to be once your north-south corridor comes into play over to Penal Parkway. We know that there's going to be cross traffic, and we actually had CivTech Traffic Engineering that actually did a study on that particular roadway and the size of it. And I'll talk about the sizing of the roads here in just a minute. The other ones in purple are really how this new, basically this, the north end, really ties back into your historic, basically town. And so we think that's very important, because literally, your historic town is just about a block away. And so this new venture going forward, really want to make sure that it interlinks very well. And you've got a pretty substantial investment, not only in the building we're sitting in today, but also your aquatic center and your library. Significant, you know, investment from the town in those facilities. So that really became sort of this core. And so if you look at the crosshairs, and I call it the crosshairs, literally civic, what we have identified as Civic Boulevard and Main Street, really becomes sort of that nexus of where the new, basically north, or basically east-west corridor will actually intersect with your, basically your existing grid that goes into Main Street itself. The other thing we looked at was really trying to leverage what you have in place already. For example, at Divergent Dam Road, there's actually an existing signal light there. We know that working with basically the DOTs, that they will be a little bit cautious on how many signal lights will actually be placed somewhere else, and we took advantage of the one that was in place already. There may be others that would follow. Also, we looked at sort of the next network down of how this other smaller roads, which really are basically the major collectors, on how it actually interlinks. So looking through each one of these roads, I'll take you through sort of a cross section, but one important aspect is we have a major, as you come through Ranch View, we actually have dubbed this road, basically River View Road. As you notice, we didn't take it all the way across. And the intent is, is to really have this downtown area really have a direct connection back to your park, this riverfront park. We felt that was really important, because anytime that you create like a major arterial, even a minor arterial, it's a physical barrier. And the way we've always sort of dubbed this, this road, is you want something that is a 25 mile an hour road. Those of you who visit, you know, California when you have the beachfront roads, you know, basically road, you know that it's a pedestrian area, that you have this, you know, amazing amenity right next to it, and that's really what you're trying to get to, and try to really break down any kind of barriers between the two. All right, with that, I will take you through some of the road sections, so you can kind of see what it looks like. So the first is really the minor arterials, what we're talking about, this Civic Boulevard, and then also Main as it goes around onto Ranch View. So what we're looking at is it's a fairly heavy carrier road, but we wanted to make sure that the traffic speed stays low. And so that's why you see the center median, and then also we have bike lanes, and then a pretty generous sidewalk on either side. And we're looking at those sidewalks to be about eight foot width. So this is very walkable, but at the same time, we want to make sure that development fronts and doesn't have a wall, because now you're dealing with an urban environment or semi-urban environment, to where you really don't want to have a suburban kind of approach, where you wall it off and people are really isolated. And you'll see in a few minutes as I go through, on how we propose to kind of change that a little bit, that view. But we do have, where we have through traffic, we still would have dedicated left turn lanes that would be built into the median, so we would still have free flow. But you can start telling a little bit of the character as you enter sort of the downtown area, is to slow you down by adding friction, what we call friction, on either side of the road to get, you know, a natural slowdown in the street. The other one that's really close to the same type of section is really River View. And this really demonstrates where River View touches the Gila River through these zones, and really starts opening this up. This could be a much larger 12-foot multi-use path that could actually circulate along the riverway itself. Again, very similar cross-section of roads, and a very, you know, pretty good-sized carrier of traffic, too. The next is the next size down, and now we're looking at basically what they call major collectors. So now you're starting to see some of these other ones that are starting to come through, but the idea is there's a single lane of traffic either direction. And again, it really does slow traffic down. That's the main objective, along with having parking, and then fronting of houses, or even, you know, higher density product, or even commercial, actually fronting again. Again, another white, basically a six-foot sidewalk, which is more neighborhood size, scale more so than like a regional scale sidewalk. And then we get all the way down to really sort of the local. These are really sort of what's going through, basically through the streets themselves. And you'll see, again, we dropped, we dropped the dedicated bike lanes, and now it's more of what they call a complete streets, which means that the speed of the, not only the cars, but will allow basically bikes to actually share the street. And again, this is probably a 20 to 25 mile an hour street that would go through the neighborhoods themselves. So some of the images that we put out there is really looking at, you know, the character that we really want to start looking at, you know, in the downtown. You have an historic downtown, it does have, you know, a backbone landscape that's in place now, that's probably reflective of the historic kind of, basically historic area, but you also realize too that you're very close to a river corridor, that's a natural environment that's mainly mesquite. So the idea would be, is really to blend this town landscape, or basically streetscape, along with basically into the overall park area. So as we go now into the open space, this is the second part of the framework, where the open space, as far as a larger riverfront park, is in this zone, a possible lake or water feature that's been shown many times in your illustrative drawings. But really, what's also important is your current park and your sports area, but also the realignment of Ruggles Ditch is part of a plan that's called a clomar, which is basically bringing the land out of the floodplain, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. But also, there are other opportunities where we have existing drainage coming through that also create these really vibrant and connected landscapes or open space throughout the entire system. So not only along Ruggles Ditch, but also as you see, everything connected, and we're also illustrating that we know within future development that you would have other community parks and neighborhood parks, too. A little bit of an example of what these open spaces could be, they could be very much a manicured, they could also go through areas of urban design area, or they could be very native. So I think there's a lot of leeway to really start looking at these, and actually even how they link into parks and the character of parks. So this is just, again, character images of what could be as the open space works its way through the framework or basically to the town. Let me get to the next. Sorry, I keep having to hunt for this one little button. Yeah, keep it. So the next is really correlates where the bicycle and the pedestrian plan really now overlaps both the open space and the street plans. This is really key moving forward. What we're seeing is an increase of use of bikes, especially e-bikes, electric bikes, which we're seeing more and more for transportation. And so you'll probably start seeing more and more of that use. So what we've actually looked at is a network of either on-street, or even within open space areas that are dedicated paths. And again, you'll end up having to come up with a, you'll be challenged in the future of what level of e-bikes will be allowed on paths versus streets. We're seeing it across the valley right now, whether they're considered, quote, motorcycles, or they're considered basically bicycles. So anyway, you'll probably be challenged that in the future. But this really does start looking at how the entire community now is connected from an alternative transportation plan, which is very important in sort of a new development And just a few examples, again, they could be a natural surface, which we actually could see that along your riverfront park. We could see the more major, basically trail systems that could also be along the major washes like Ruggles Ditch. And then here are like the on-street, either as what they call complete streets, which are actually in the same lane, or actually separated. So all of these are sort of the options for that. All right, let's go to a little bit about the framework or the master plan itself. So I'm going to concentrate pretty much on the town-owned land, and what I'll be looking, what I'll be taking you through is the commercial mixed-use hub. We'll talk a little bit about the different neighborhoods that surround it, and how everything comes together. And then we'll also look at maybe how this thing may phase out, or basically phase in far as development itself. So the very corner, this is what we're looking at now, we're in this location right now in a town hall. This is your library, so this is directly north. And so the intent of this site could be a grocery store, it could be retail. What this really lines up on is this creates a square, pretty much again, at Main Street and Civic Center Boulevard. And the orientation of this really leads you back to Riverfront Drive and Riverfront Park itself. So this is really a key piece that brings some retail into the heart, you know, of the community itself, especially into the downtown area. Some character images, people are familiar pretty much with some of the sprouts and some of the smaller kind of specialty stores. We still see probably your major grocer, if a new major grocer comes in, they probably want to be on Penal Parkway. And I'll show you, in fact, in the land use plan, which is more the nuts and bolts plan, we'll look at basically where the commercial and office may be located. But we're seeing the one that's really literally north or kitty-corner to where we are right now, being something probably a little more neighborhood-serving, that is probably anywhere from a 10 to 15, maybe 20,000 square foot store, rather than a 80 to 100,000 square foot store, which is like the big fries. So what's going on here? Hang on. This isn't, good, okay, all right. Thought I was going to lose my show here in just a second, so then I'll have to start doing dancing. All right. So again, a little bit, we did lose one of the ones, this is more of a character image of what the mixed use could be. Let me see if I can get everything back on line again. Okay, good. All right, we're recovered, which is good. So the parcel you see right now is part of the 30-acre parcel that you have current negotiations going on for a development agreement. We put our own spin on to it, this is 10 acres approximately, and what we've modeled out is a possibly a build, basically rental homes for rent, that would probably be somewhat gated, that seems to be their mode as far as more of a secure environment. What we're concerned about is be, you know, actually if this was a walled off or fenced location, that people would have to go all the way around this just to get to the park. If you do have an agreement that comes in and talks about a fenced kind of arrangement or gated, we would recommend that there's always an area that you can penetrate publicly through this area. So you never have more than a half-block, or a block at the very most, that people would have to go around something. So this is something, as you go through future development agreements, that you may look at to make sure that you have a very porous, because the last thing you really want to do in this zone is bring kind of suburban values into the heart of your town. This is all about being open, units that face the street that are very transparent and not closed. Just a few examples, and these could be single-story, two-story. Everything pretty much within Territory Square is basically a one or two-story. We're not looking at high-rise or anything else. Obviously, we try to want to keep the same scale that you have in your community right now. At the maximum, it would probably be three, and that would probably be up closer to maybe a commercial area or something like that, to where it would be more in scale, obviously with the larger buildings. The next area, so this is your aquatic center, and the idea would be is to look at a different type of product. And again, these are kind of what-ifs, and what we put out here is something that maybe helps you visualize what could actually go in these zones. What we're modeling here is an attached unit like a duplex, or even a small duplex, or basically detached even townhomes. So again, a small community, it has a lot of, you basically can walk through the entire development, so not to basically block you off between park and your civic center area, all the way out to Riverfront Park. And then again, you can see part of Ruggles Ditch coming through. We see, again, this will be a very robust open space system. And again, a few more examples of townhomes. And again, a few more examples of townhomes. And then this is probably the most conventional. So this is what we call small, basically a small lot subdivision. It is alley-loaded. And again, when you get down to smaller lots, if you start putting garages out front, it becomes a garagescape. I think everybody knows what we're typically looking at, where you have the garage and then the front door is somewhere around the back or around the side of it. So what we're really promoting in this type of development, it is a tighter in probably 40-foot lots, 45, maybe 50s. And the idea would be that the houses would face the street. This would be a dedicated alleyway that the garages would come into the back of. And what it does, it sets up a streetscape that really features front doors and porches. And again, this is very much in character with what you have currently in town about where, you know, you have these beautiful homes, your historic homes, but what's really one of the prominent features is they have porches. And that's a public aspect or semi-public aspect of being, you know, a neighborhood. This is where people really interact, and that's what you want to promote versus having a garage door that they roll up and then maybe the kids go out front, you know, with a bicycle and go back in. This idea is to have really something that's much more dominant from the standpoint of a porch. All right. Little bit about the civic town center, which we're sitting in right now, obviously town hall, your fire station. This is really a true asset for your community. And I wouldn't be too quick to try to fill it up. And the reason why I say that is that as your town grows, it's nice to have a place reserved for those future cultural aspects. So if you do a new performing arts, if this building ever gets replaced or remodeled or whatever, you need something larger, this may be the location. If you ever build a new town hall, this may be the location. If you have a rec center, this may be the location. The idea is to really create that civic area. And I've always, in fact, I was on a panel in Marana, and they were just set on putting apartments just as quickly as they can. But when you start looking at the projected growth in Marana, up to 250, 300,000 people, they're going to need space for basically their civic and cultural aspects. So I would be, like I said, this is a real gem that you have right now within your community. And I said, it's one of those where you can always put intramuses, parks that can be moved or something like that. But this is, like I said, this is one of the biggest gems that I think that you've already started in your community and so close to your downtown. And you're all very familiar with your own buildings in here. Your open space, Riverfront Park. I mean, this is something that the City of Phoenix took a hold of about almost 20 years ago with their Rio Salado project. So the Corps of Engineers went in with partnership with City of Phoenix, and they redeveloped five miles of their river. And they've added an enormous amount of riparian and also trail systems, but it's a very natural environment. What they found was that the Gila River, just because of the hydrology, is there's a fairly shallow water table. And what they have, and if you ever get a chance to walk through the area in and around the Autobahn Society or something like that, what they do is they have a series of pumps that basically pump water up to kind of faux streams that flow back into the river. And the whole idea is it just creates life. And we know that, you know, the Gila River right now, it's activated because of all of our rains and storms, and it's flowing pretty muddy right now, which is, but it's nice to see actually water and river. I know we use river pretty loosely in Arizona. And so this one's one that really does flow. But I think this is one of the main aspects that you really have a great, again, a great asset to develop over time. But really think about how it really connects back in. And you'll also see how, you know, your core here actually does always make sure this area, which I would promote, always is a very well-connected piece because that will be the success of your retail. Usually retail and commercial follows rooftops. You don't usually lead with retail, so this may be a little slower in development as far as when you want to bring that on until something can actually get supported and you actually can attract the right type of retail. Meaning that if you really want a sprouts, they have some very specific demographics they try to hit, Whole Foods, all of them. But if you want to, you know, really look at those specific type stores, then make sure you also look, and this is what Harry's, or Harvey's really good at, is really take a look at the economics and see if it does really support that or when it would support that kind of a store. And again, I just think you've got a great asset. This one's actually at Stapleton and basically in Colorado, Denver, Colorado, which the majority of the open space areas that are, that connected open space are actually natural. And then we get to more areas that are programmed, have an outdoor amphitheater. I mean, having an outdoor amphitheater, you know, in your riverfront park would be spectacular, especially just the views that you have. All right, so nuts and bolts. So there's a big section within the overall master plan that really now breaks it down into land uses and densities and everything else. And I won't go into really any detail of that tonight, other than, as you notice this zone, and I'll just generally go through, this is your, really the commercial office zone. It's about a 600-foot depth. And so that really does cater to a larger commercial district or as those things come through. As you step back, and again, this is on private property, private held property, higher density residential, when we say higher density, you're still talking maybe 12 units to, at the max, 18 units, which would be like a standard apartment complex, possibly two, maybe three stories. But then it gets into now a more of a mixed use, which could be both retail and housing. Here's your civic area. And then a lot of what you're seeing now is the open space. And as you pull away from basically the downtown, basically to the west, this is where you transition from townhouses to basically small lot to maybe low-density resident. And when I say low-density, it's still probably four units, three units to the acre, which is a very traditional type density that you see in a lot of neighborhoods. We also have looked into phasing that actually corresponds to what they call the clomar lomar, which, you know, you've put funds toward basically filling or raising part of your lands up out of the floodplain. So this, we actually have a detailed plan on how that may be phased. And again, it's pretty detailed within kind of the master plan itself. And we could always go in that in more detail. But again, it follows what's already been established as bringing parts of your land out of the, basically the floodplain and then continuing on in some fashion as land start goes through. So just as an idea of the phasing, so this is basically what you have today. Civic area, you have, these areas are actually raised out of the floodplain. And then the idea would be is over a few years that you would actually fill in a certain aspect that you actually build on what you had before. Also, the idea too is the town's investment would hopefully spur private sector development. That's the, really one of the intent of really getting that going. And then also building value obviously back for the town land. But again, looking at the possibility of being able to really spur development as it comes through and also extending your infrastructure continues on all the way out to a full build-out. And again, I've worked on a lot of very large master plans that they always had the horizon in 10 and 15 years. They tend to double themselves really quickly, especially because of the economic cycles. So this is not a rush plan by any means, but I think it's a, hopefully a carefully crafted plan that gives you enough information to really think through on how the land is actually put out and then basically put out for development and then also encouraging private sector. And with that, I'll yield for, did you want to wrap anything up? I'll yield for questions then.
Thank you for the detailed review. I'm going to open it up at this time for council for questions and comments. Councilmember Anderson?
Can we get a copy of your presentation?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
We will, we will email that out in the morning.
Thank you.
Can you also post it to our website for our citizens to have access to as well?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Sorry, I was just trying to look for information too before I ask the questions here. So overall, I was just really impressed with your plans. So thank you so much for putting all that together and beautiful graphics and images to be able to fully represent, I think, the overall vision. So I really appreciate everything.
Thank you.
I just had some sort of overall questions. The biggest one that I'm sort of struggling to overcome is especially with the monsoons that we just witnessed is all of the rainwater that was, all of the rainwater that was coming down the street recently was flooding, almost completely flooded down Main Street. So when I'm looking at all these beautiful plans, and I do see that you have these drainage areas and you've reconstructed some of the overall irrigation of the area where water's flowing, how does that play into where we're at currently? And is that a part of your estimated valuation of how much things are going to cost in the future? Is that something that you've thought through as far as where that water is going to go and how it's truly going to be redirected?
Councilmember Rodriguez, so Ruggles' Ditch is probably one of the biggest drainage improvements that would actually happen. And I probably should really defer to Mr. Solis to talk about, a little bit more about the infrastructure that's being planned.
So drainage flows from south to north. So the areas that we build up in Territory Square wouldn't necessarily have an impact on the flooding in the downtown area today. Again, in order to, to take these areas out of the floodplain, we cannot build any type of certified levee. We cannot build a dam, anything like that, because the water has to get out from the downtown to the river. I know that's been talked about in the past, there's some confusion on that, but there cannot be an actual physical barrier there. So it'll be raised on fill. So we will be looking at, we've already done some hydrology in the downtown area, and that will be utilized as well on designing the Ruggles' Ditch. That is a, is a factor, the limited capacity that has. We've identified that in the study. But unfortunately, your drainage improvements are going to come out of the general fund. There's no, there's no enterprise fund, there's no HERF fund, and so these things are going to be expensive projects that with Mr. Kraus joining the team, we will be looking back at that study to see what opportunities that he may see as it relates to just land use as the planner of the town, as well as economic development, community development, all the different titles he holds. We look forward to reinvigorating those conversations. But essentially, like I said, from south to north, so there's not, nothing that's going to be done to mitigate that minus a large underground storm drain system primarily. Buying a singular lot is not going to have a very large impact. I'm not sure how the community would like to have a big hole next to them. Those are just generally not popular things. And we don't have, there's not enough property in any one specific area. And those, the difference between an online retention basin and an offline is very dramatic. So an online basin just intercepts water coming through, but once it fills up, it no longer attenuates. It attenuates the very beginning, which is the least impactful part of a storm event. An offline basin actually has an indentation in the bank, a weir, and the water runs off of there, therefore clipping the peak and reduces the impact to your community. So these are things that we'll be bringing back after discussing with Mr. Kraus.
Thank you. I have a host of questions, so I apologize. I was taking notes, so again, that was my biggest concern. I noticed obviously that we're talking a lot about roadways and paths. Is that consistent with our current parks and trail plan, or how are those going to be implemented into those other plans?
So yes, actually what we've looked at is how this would actually integrate overall. And obviously with the overall framework that we're working with now, the idea is to sew very tightly. In fact, Larry Harmer, that was here previously, made sure that we really looked at basically the, basically the alternative modes, the active transportation plan. And we wove those in, we believe, in a pretty good fashion. I think as it gets into more detail, I think especially on the parks and rec, as you go into the private sectors, I think that's the one area that probably needs to have a little bit more study.
Yeah, I was very concerned about those, because I know it's big, that's heavy thing for me. I'm really into the parks and trail plans, so. Let's see here, actual flood flow, we already talked about that. Okay, any place that we, oh, I just wanted to make the general comment, that any place that we place the road, we should own the land. I don't believe in doing this leased land situation. That should never be occurring. So I just wanted that on the record, that I wholly support that we should own the land that our roads are going to be on. So I just wanted to make that very clear. I know also when we've made plans for big projects, we tend to run into archaeological findings, and often that becomes a challenge or a barrier to our original plans. So I just wondered, what was our flexibility and what things could we change if we were to implement this plan and something like that is found? What would our alternatives be? Or do you have anything set up for sort of an extra overlay of different options for certain areas depending on what we find?
Councilmember Rodriguez, no, it, right now, we really haven't looked at the cultural aspects. There is a framework plan. So I think the idea, the framework, I believe, you know, you're trying to basically connect point A and B.
Right.
Now whether it does a little bit of a curl around or whatever, then I think it has the flexibility. I think the, the portion of bringing it up out of the floodplain has a certain impact also, and that's probably going to be discovered very early in that process. So it's not as so much as running the road and then finding out. I think as you go through your floodplain mitigation or basically bringing things up, I think those aspects will show themselves very quickly.
I guess my hesitation comes in is if we're, if we're going to implement the plan and then take it piece by piece and we're projecting to go one direction, and we get to a certain point and we realize that this is an ancient burial ground or a big archaeological find is found there, then we can't progress that further. So like you said, I think a lot of that will be found in the beginning. I just don't want us to be set in stone that this is the plan we have to have and we're back to square one once those things have been found.
I, I would recommend though, if there is a concern and, you know, whether anything has been mapped, and obviously that can be at least the first step in that is to go to the historic preservation, you know, within the state, and then, and then be able to really find if there's, if there's aspects of that within the river corridor already, that's sort of the first. If there's any hint, then it may be prudent for the town to actually do a cultural survey to see if they do find anything.
And then one other point I wanted to bring up was the low-density area that you brought on the map. Lisa, do you know if that's the same location for the proposed residential development that we, I saw posted about earlier? Is that the same location or is it over a little bit more?
None of the current locations are being posted about right now online. They are all in the floodplain, and they are not going through a process at this point.
Okay, thank you. And that's all I have. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Councilmember Neal?
I'm just wondering, what is the timeframe of this project? Like where, where do you, I know it's way out, but how long is something like this going to take?
Councilmember Neal, so depending on economic cycles, and I know that brokers are looking all through Florence right now, very large funds that are looking to secure, you know, properties. So it's always, and when I made the comment about master plans that have been scheduled to, you know, build out in seven to 10 years are commonly in the 20-year to 25-year period. So it really does relate to the, the cycle of basically what happens and what you do from the standpoint of even job attraction. So a lot of things happen that direction. With the town in control, obviously of a large piece of land, you do sit in a pretty unique situation where you can actually promote that growth. I would still advise not to develop your entire parcel before the private sector actually develops, because I, again, I think the idea is, is to really use your land and your access to water and sewer to basically promote basically the private sector now coming to the table. So I wish I had an exact answer for you, and I talked around that, but I would think that probably in a scale of this, it's probably a 30-year build-out.
Any other council members have questions or comments?
Thank you very much for your presentation.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thanks.
Mayor, we would like to leave this under the advisement of the council, and in approximately 30 days, we'll bring back the plan for an actual adoption.
Our next item on the agenda is item six, which is our presentation. Nope, I apologize, item seven. I have far too many notes all over this already this evening. Item seven is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item- at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to purchase MRO supplies, industrial, building, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC materials through Ferguson Enterprises using the State of Arizona Cooperative Contract Number CTR 047692-1 in an amount not to exceed $90,000. Item B, authorization to purchase water treatment, wastewater treatment and pool chemicals through Hill Brothers Chemical using the City of Mesa Cooperative Purchasing Agreement 2020135 in an amount not to exceed $55,000. And item C, which is approval of the June 6, 2022 Town Council Meeting Minutes. And item D is to receive and file the Planning and Zoning Commission Minutes of July 7, 2022. Just at the start prior to the meeting, we did have a request from Roger Beatty to remove items A and B. So if there's no further motion at this time, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions of item A and B.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. That motion carries. At this time, if you would like to allow Mr. Beatty to speak?
Madam Mayor?
Hello?
Madam Mayor?
Hang on one moment. We're just tweaking your sound. You sound like you are very loud. Hang on one moment. All right, let's try that one more time, Roger.
Madam Mayor?
Much better.
Okay. Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me talk real quick. I kind of brought this up about a year ago and thought that we maybe would have gotten a little bit of a change, but I was wondering why these two items were not put out to RFP along with similar items, so that local businesses might be able to bid on them. I know at least B would definitely be able to be fulfilled by a local vendor. Number one was a little generic, so I couldn't tell if that one would be able to. But I know at least Ace Hardware locally, it has contracts both federal and state and would be easily available to, to have answered that RFP on B that never came.
All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll call up Mr. Chris Salas. Mr. Salas, can you please provide us with background on these agenda items?
Vice Mayor, members of council, I guess the first thing I would ask is a question.
You can sit at your desk and answer a question.
Go ahead and try your microphone one more time.
This is better?
No.
Hello?
Test one, two.
Would you like me to address these two items as one item or independently?
However you choose.
Okay. I'm going to choose to address these independently. So our contract with Ferguson is primarily for the 051 account, our water department, and to a lesser degree, the 052 account, which is our wastewater. This is for stuff like the green pipe that you see us purchase. This is for valves. This is for meters. This is for all kinds of different items that we purchase for the water department. These are commercial grade. These aren't items that a, a local retailer would have. And we've been purchasing off of this contract, I believe, for five years, maybe six. So this allows us to make our repairs, fix waterline breaks, and we've done many, many waterline projects in-house utilizing both Ferguson as well as Fortaline, in case those names sound familiar. We are not moving forward with Fortaline at this very second at this meeting, but those are the two that we have primarily used over the last five or six years. Item B is for, again, our water and wastewater plants. These are large cylinders of chlorine gas. These are commercial grade. And we've been utilizing Hill Brothers for, I believe, six-plus years on this contract or a similar contract. And Hill Brothers is the, the primary supplier of these types of materials throughout the state, or at least through the valley. With that, are there any questions on either item?
Any questions?
Yes. I think the question was, did you solicit any bids from local vendors for these items?
No, sir.
Why not?
These are commercial-grade items. These are not things that would be sold out local vendors. True value is not going to, boy, I hate to use any names. A local vendor is not going to carry these types of sizes and not at a wholesale price.
Okay. Thank you.
I, I would like to add that today, we were contracted by a vendor on Main Street, and they did ask how they could be part of our bidding process. And the finance department did work with them, provide links to make sure that they are aware of all items that we are currently bidding on in the future. And so we do want to continue to have goodwill with our vendors. Those items that can be received locally, we are very interested in looking at our vendors to have that local preference, be able to be utilized. In some cases, like gas chlorine and things like that, then, then we do go to the, to the commercial grade quality. So, but we did have that vendor reach out to us and make contact to be able to work with finance to make sure that they're aware of anything we're bidding on.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? With that, we need a motion on A and/or B or both.
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 7A and 7B.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item AA is new business. This is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a concierge agreement with Historic Florence Foundation to plan, manage, and operate the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds. Ms. Allison Fleece.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. The Town of Florence solicited an RFP for qualified individuals, companies, or organizations to manage, plan, operate, and maintain the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds for a 10-year period. The RFP was posted on the Town of Florence website beginning March 30, and the close date for all bids was June 2. The opportunity was also listed in the Florence Reminder and Blade Tribune on April 21st and April 28th. The town received one bid for this project from the Historic Florence Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization. The foundation currently oversees, organizes the Junior Parada, Florence Music Festival, Battle of the Bands, Box Canyon, Blume &amp; Bluegrass Festival, various fundraising events, weddings, and private parties. Noted in the RFP and the pre-bid meeting was the issue that the current well is inoperable and that the facilities have surpassed or are approaching the end of their useful life and will require major improvements. The RFP also addresses the fact that the town and the concessionaire will have to work closely together to update the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Grounds master plan to meet the community and council's current needs for this facility. As the RFP was written, the concessionaire shall provide 10% of all fees for uses to the Town of Florence to be placed in a capital improvement fund for capital improvement projects on the rodeo During negotiations, the Historic Florence Foundation asked for the following considerations as until a permanent water source is in place at the grounds. The foundation would like the town to be responsible for hauling and storing water from the rodeo grounds. From the anticipated events and historical data, staff predict this amount to be approximately $300 to $650 a day and a total of approximately $14,500 based on the, based on the events that the foundation has, has currently planned out. Staff does not recommend that the town be responsible for hauling and storing water at the rodeo grounds due to the expenses incurred by the general fund. This request impacts public, public work staff who are paid by the HERF funds. Those dollars will have to be reimbursed from the general fund, impacting either council contingency or the community services special event budget. The Historic Florence Foundation also asks that the town maintain responsibility for sanitation and disposal. The town is not currently billed for ad services at the rodeo ground site. Therefore, there would be no additional charge to the town if sanitation remained under the Town of Florence's name. However, the town is bidding for a new contract, which may change the town's agreement for sanitation services. If the town is required to pay for these services, staff recommends this bill be passed on to the foundation. Also, if the Historic Florence Foundation needs additional sanitation, staff recommend that the foundation is responsible for securing and funding the additional services. The foundation would like the town to be responsible for repairs to the existing collapsed well. If awarded, the Historic Florence Foundation and the town will work together to create a long-term plan for the rodeo grounds. The town and the foundation will prioritize choosing a location for the rodeo grounds and finding a water solution at the current or future site and creating an advisory committee appointed by the town council consisting of five members in the pub, of the public, who will guy, who will provide guidance on key aspects and processes with various prospective community stakeholders. The Historic Florence Foundation would also like to utilize a 24/7 security guard slash ground maintenance employee. We did reach out to the BLM, who has no restrictions on a 24/7 security guard slash ground maintenance employee. And if the foundation wishes to utilize said employee, that employee would be the responsibility of the Historic Florence Foundation. We do have representatives from the Historic Florence Foundation here this evening, and that is the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Is there any member of our council that has any questions or comments at this time? Councilmember Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, I disagree with the recommendation that the town not pay for the hauling of the water. I think the town should pay for the hauling of the water. You know, there was an agreement that was made 2006. That agreement said that the town would provide water out there. We don't have enough time tonight to go into all the reasons that didn't happen, but it did not happen. But, you know, I think it's the town's responsibility to provide the water. And so for $14,000, I think we should be able to come up with that out of our budget somewhere.
Mayor, Mayor and members of council, I'd like to address that with the RFP that was issued to the street.
Can you speak into the mic? I'm sorry.
Are we having troubles with our, so I would like to address it in the RFP that was solicited. So what you will find is the RFP did include the concept that we have a non-operational well. We did also include that the concessionaire hereby accepts the property in the condition existing.
Lisa, we can't hear you.
Sorry.
I apologize.
The concession, the concessionaire hereby accepts the property in the condition existing for those that date. And so we did say non-operational well, we did do that. We're not saying that council cannot make a suggestion that they pay for it, but what we are doing is saying that staff is making the recommendation based on the solicitation in how it was solicited. The vendor has come back and asked for a consideration for council. So if you do do a consideration, staff is requesting that you name the dollar value that would be available, and, and we, we can determine what funding it comes from, but that it be separate and agreed upon that the dollar value would be until the water issue is resolved. At the point that the water issue is resolved, it would be a meter or a well, and they would be responsible for paying for the water that is used.
Well, if I understood Ally right, it's $14,000. Is that for the year?
Yes, sir. With the events that they have planned out, we think it would be up to about $14,500. We did speak with the foundation in a meeting, pre-meeting prior to the, the agreement, and they believe they can do it anywhere from $7,500 to up to $14,500.
Well, then I would make a recommendation that we set our max budget up to $14,000.
Okay, we have more conversation occurring, but we'll note your recommendation. Councilmember Neal? Vice Mayor said that you were before her.
I think I heard, but not, sorry.
Just trying to make sure everybody's heard. Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Hughes.
Judy might have been before. So I, I just want to, just clarification, I, I do know the answer to this, but I will ask for clarification on the floor, because I misunderstood it or don't remember the conversation going the way that I thought it did. I thought that our RFP, we would pay for the water for the town-sponsored events, any event that was not sponsored or partnershiped with the town, that then the facilitator would pay for their own water. That's how I thought the RFP was going out, but that is not what the RFP said then.
So the RFP, if, if we go into the RFP, do you have the RFP marked?
What is it, Louis?
It's this.
So what you did was you entered into a, a private contract, a separate contract for the Junior Parada, in which you are paying for. If you're talking about the old agreement that used to be in place for a former concessionaire, then what it said, the Town of Florence would pay for two events and provide funding for those two events. The two events were, at the time, the Town of Florence Junior Parada and the CAC rodeo that took place out there. And those were the two events that we did pay for the funding.
The current contract is for 14 years. Or, I'm sorry.
Ten.
The current contract is for, the current contract is for 10 years, and the amount that you've asked it, asked for us to make available, Councilmember Anderson, is up to $14,000 a year. We would like to make sure that you're understanding that this contract is for 10 years, and the amount of monies that would be available would be until the water issue was resolved. Clarifying question. And I'm only staying on it because it's the same track. So hang on one second. So clarification, how much do we, I'm trying to think of how I want to word this, because I have all my other questions all lined up. So this one is not lined up, so I apologize. So I believe if memory serves me correct, we're paying approximately $5,000, correct?
For the Junior Parada.
Yes, for the Junior Parada.
That is what your contract is.
And if I go to page 92, where it's showing a breakdown, I mean, it even starts over at page 90, and it's talking about 89, and it's talking about the events, Junior Parada, three-day event, water truck, 52, 59 hourly, water truck driver, $37 hourly, $2.50 per thousand gallons. But if I flip down to page 93, they're breaking it down to approximately $1,852 needed in regards to providing water to that date. Is that correct?
The council's agreement with, for Junior Parada is for 10, or $5,000 for the event. It handles so much more than just the water.
Correct.
So we just want to make sure that's perfectly clear.
No, very familiar.
Yes. And so, and, and I do want to say also that the events that have been happening at the rodeo grounds, the bull riding series, seeing it live on Facebook, that there's more activity at the rodeo grounds right now with a dry well than there has been in many, many years for the Town of Florence. So the vendor that has put in the RFP is, is So, the vendor that has put in the RFP is doing an excellent and a fabulous job, which each one of their individual events that they're coming in, and they're seeking special events. And as I said before, town staff, when we put out the RFP, it was so that we would get a partner to be able to come in and plan for and develop a site and also to determine a location. Because half of the reason why we haven't determined the fix on the well is because we have not said that that site is going to be the official site. So, staff is waiting for the RFP to be issued, so we have a partner that's going to work with us to establish the location of the site as well as the needs and the future use. Because when we plan, we don't want to just have enough water for their current needs. We want it for build-out needs. And we do appreciate what they bring to the table, and we are very enamored by the services that they are providing the community. And I think that stands for all of our staff.
Thank you so much. And actually, that was one of my comments is our town council needs to decide on a site, and we haven't. So, anyhow, I'm not going to go further down my list of questions. I just wanted to touch on that one tiny bit. And Judy, Councilmember Hughes, you mentioned at the last event, how many people did you say attended?
Eight or nine hundred, was that not correct?
Yeah.
And that was for... That was phenomenal. And that was a one-day event, right?
So, my question is if we are bringing in eight to nine hundred visitors, and this is we're operating in a business-type model, how come we're struggling with paying for the water?
I know.
Councilmember Hughes, go ahead.
Well, that was my question is that we finally found somebody that is a family member from the original person that started this, were the oldest in the nation for junior rodeo, and their heart is right for what it is, going back to the kids. And I, for one, would love to be able to give them a win-win situation for making it work. They're working with no positives. They're working with no water. When I came on in nineteen, we were told, it was under Parks and Rec, we were told each year that the bleachers are fixed, the well had a problem, but it was fixed. And those were, we found out, were not true. And so, we have held this... This problem has been with us for four years, and I would love to see a way to change it right now. We have a vendor that their heart is for the kids, and I think that we need to put our money where our mouth is and give them some help.
So, if that is the direction of council, then what you would want to do is make your motion awarding the contract and then set aside the specific amount that would be available per year until the day that the water is fixed. And like I said, staff is coming forward with that recommendation based on how we issued the RFP, and we understand that council has the ability to contribute if they would like to.
Well, the other... I was reading the RFP, and I'm amazed they even brought it back in because I wouldn't have signed the thing. It says you're going to take everything, equipment as-is, nothing works, as-is, where-is, in the condition, but when you leave, you have to be... It's got to be a punch list with the town, with a certified person to fix everything that's wrong. And I'm like, wow, that's so unfair.
Mayor Walter, Councilmember Hughes, I will say that the other part of that is that there's a planning effort within the document that states that CIP projects will move forward with the town helping to pay for those. So, we plan them together, we build them together. Town is paying for most of it. Ten percent of the cost is coming from the events that they're holding. Those items are being tagged as tagged properties. If anything, I could say that if we're not learning for our past, then shame on us. The way that we have presented this to the world in the RFP as well to the council as well as to them is that we're going to have an open and honest relationship where we're putting things on the table, and that's what we have done. The condition is an as-is condition. The well does not work, and we are going to have a partner where we're going to come in and plan for the future. And when they leave, there will be town dollars that go in, there'll be sweat equity, monies from them that are raised at their events that go in, but it'll be a real partnership. And the important part of the board that will be established is also is to make sure that no member of council, no member of the public can ever say, "We didn't know what the condition of the grounds were," because those meetings will be just like any other board. They will be public and will have insight, and that'll make sure that they get into the CIP planning process and that council is aware of what's happening at all times. And we're looking forward to having a great partnership.
I just want to tell you that in nineteen, it was under the CIP. All these things were exactly what you're saying. So, we have to back up what we say. So, it brings up another situation is that I know that there's some discussion on where the rodeo ground needs to be, but for the... I mean, they're making it work where it's at.
I like where it's at. I've already said that.
I like it where it's at, too. And I would love to say, yes, we want them to have it, but just for... So that we can get that well fixed, leave it where it's at for right now, for another ten years at least. And just... I mean, it's in a perfect position where it's at. That way, we can move forward, we can get the... And do we have money for the well in the budget?
I'm happy to bring that item back up to a future meeting where I can have the team come forward and you can select the site because right now, what's on the agenda is the Charles Whitlow Rodeo Ground. And so, what I'll need to do is I'll need to bring that item back, and then I'll need to talk to the finance department, talk to Public Works Director, Mr. Solis, and sit down and come up with a creative plan. We're still underneath the permanent expenditure limitation where we are this fiscal year, so I definitely need to see where we are, what monies we have available, but I can bring that all to a future meeting, and I'm happy to do so.
So, today, we're just trying to...
Determine if they are the concierge or not.
Well, I say yes. That was my thing.
Councilmember Mendoza? And then Rodriguez.
Now, I've noticed that you guys are being very successful out there with events. So, I'm reading here, you have the potential to recruit other outside agencies for events. What's going to happen in the event that you get those? Are you going to come and ask for more money, or how are we going to take care of the matter of expanding, especially if we go for a ten-year contract?
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you. Councilmember Mendoza, thank you for that question. The Historic Florence Foundation is excited to take this project on over the next ten years. No, we do not have any plans to come back to the town to ask for any funding to help us put on, promote, and support any of the activities that we have planned to hold there. So far, we have held several events onsite that have been very successful, both in participation and financially. It has cost our foundation every dime we've taken in in order to put those events on. Thousands of gallons of water we've hauled ourselves to ensure that the events that have been planned out there, there was water for the restrooms, there was water for dust control, there was water for the arena, there was water for livestock, and we made that happen. The question on the table right now is without the water, our foundation cannot support that facility. The cost of that would just be too much. And again, I know it was brought up, that well has been down for many years, and rightfully so, the facility has been deteriorating since that's happened because without the water, you can't expect for that facility to continue to host events that will bring people into this town. I've had several conversations with different organizations, the latest one being Quinn Creek, who have been holding their event here year after year, but they were very clear with me, without water this year, they would not consider Florence as a location to hold their Junior Parada. We have been speaking to other organizations to try and increase the amount of events that are had at the facility. Everybody loves the site location, lots of room for parking, lots of room to maneuver It's a great facility as far as the size of the arena. The conditions, of course, have been, as you know, deteriorating, but with a plan in place and hard work and effort, we can bring this back to a facility that I believe any pro-rodeo association would love to come to. So, I hope that answers your questions. If you have any more, I'd be glad to answer.
Well, I was just curious if that was going to be enough. I mean, I think the council wants to support this rodeo, whether it's there or anywhere. If, you know, I've always been...
John.
I've always been a proponent to moving it because I believe that we need to make a nicer, bigger facility, something a little closer to support the town a little bit. If we can find another way to support putting in a well and then using that afterwards if we decide to move it, then I'm good for that. If not, if we decide not to move it, then by all means, we need to start making some changes to where we do have the facilities to support. And that's all I've got to say.
Okay.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you so much for coming out today. I really appreciate it. You guys have done great.
Can't hear you.
You guys...
Yeah, we're all having problems with our mics.
Apparently. I just wanted to say thank you again for coming out. I know you guys have done a lot of great work in the town and appreciate everything that you've done with bringing people into the community as well as to give our citizens something fun and exciting to do. My biggest concern, obviously, similarly, is the water. When it comes to moving it or not moving it, which is sort of another point of discussion, my thoughts are is that I'd like to have something more permanent, more... Something that's buildable. I don't like the fact that it's state land that's not ours, never will be ours, and that we can't do anything with it, nor is it really a partnership because they're not going to be willing to build on it to partner with us to build the facility. So, that was my thought process, just to build off of what Judy was saying about moving it or not moving it. So, I think that while it's all up in the air, some of the questions I had related back to you said there was eight or nine hundred people at this last event. What kind of admission are you charging, and is it going to be consistent moving forward?
Yeah, go ahead. These... The last two events, we kind of just wanted to kick it off. We knew we weren't going to profit much money. It's ten dollars a carload. We're trying to keep it very reasonable. People are hurting. People, you know, inflation's gone up, so we're thinking, well, let's make it really reasonable. Let's just get people out there to have a good night and forget about everything else that's going on at home. So, yeah, the last two events, the nine hundred people would include the contestants as well. And, you know, they don't pay. There could have been eight, nine hundred people, but we were so busy working the event that we don't really get to see much of what's going on anyway. But our whole mission is to make family events enjoyable and reasonably priced. You know, we could see what's going on in the valley. You know, a lot of events, eighty, ninety dollars, thirty-five dollars a person. We don't want to do that. We want to put a nice event on for a decent amount of money and let everyone enjoy themselves. So, that goes back to answering, where's the profit? Well, there wasn't much. We had to pay stock contractors, and there's a lot that goes into them small rodeos and large rodeos, so that's my answer.
Yeah. And just to build on that, never was intending to say that we should be making a profit on the back of our citizens for something that they should be enjoying. So, that was never my direction that I was trying to go with, but at some point, you do have to have a cost balance of things that will need infrastructure to be able to reinvest it for the next project.
And that's coming.
Okay. So, that sort of leads to the water discussion. To me, it seems very fair that, you know, we do support you when it comes to the efforts of the water, but it seems to me that when I'm thinking about any contract negotiations, that maybe you would split something of that type of cost or maybe have a maximum dollar amount. Having the maximum dollar amount of fourteen thousand, when you're saying sometimes it could be seven thousand for the year, seems like we might, you know, obviously be covering the whole thing. To me, there needs to be a cost share in it. Obviously, we want to be able to support you as best we can, but also that's where, you know, business comes in as far as making sure you're being able to reinvest in the next project, but also not coming at the expense of other projects. And I know that obviously the rodeo grounds is going to need a lot of work, whether that's its current location or moving to a new location. So, I feel like we're going to be, obviously, picking up quite a bit of heavy lifting, too, regardless of what that looks like. But just sort of planning that we're a partnership and that we want to work together with you and that, you know, means that you're at the table just as much as we are when it comes to the future growth of the rodeo grounds, so.
Sounds good.
Don't go anywhere yet. All right. So, I have a few things. You answered the question about the water, and I'm same angle as her, just so you know, we're all on the same page. I was looking at it saying, wow, you guys, I've seen the Facebook posts. I've been out there in person. I've seen the amount of people that have been out there. So, that's why I looked at it and said, okay, well, if our long-range goal is for it to be sustainable, my understanding is it can be.
It can be. Yes, it can.
I do like, and I just want to say this next fact just for everybody because somebody had asked me the question before, so I'm just going to put it here. It's already answered in the documents. Somebody said, well, if you're, you know, in collaboration with them, like, are the books open? How do you know, like, they're being open and transparent? And I said, you know, it's easy. It's already in our contract. It's there. Our town staff, finance, works with you guys. That transparency is there going both ways. Because as I understand it, and again, this is before all of our time on council, actually, yeah, literally, all of our time before council, prior when it was with a different organization, there wasn't that communication and collaboration that should have been there the entire time. It might have been on a few here and there, but not consistently. So, we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. We also went through, and I wanted to make note, on page 103, it talked about like the rodeo advisory committee. So, we want to make sure that that is up and running, and again, that's going to assist with the communication and the transparency. Council, we need to get it on the agenda upcoming soon. I want the site finalized. We need to stop kicking the can down the road, and we need to say where the rodeo grounds are going to be, commit to it, put it in the CIP, and move forward. Third, I had a question for Ms. Garcia. When I'm looking at the bullet point on page sixty-six, it says the Historic Florence Foundation asks that the Town of Florence maintain responsibility for sanitation disposal. God bless you. It goes on a little bit. Is our agreement changing with... No, it's not rad. It's the government. BLM. Is our contract with BLM changing in any way?
No, and in fact, just to make it clear, is once the Town of Florence has a patent on a site and we're using it for recreation services, the town council would have to say they did not want it or we no longer wanted it there to be, go back. And then we would either choose to file a different patent type or we would choose to give up the land, but the land has been secured and is secured.
Okay, then is there a reason why we would change out that garbage service? Because I was reading it, and it said...
The garbage service is a different area, and the Town of Florence is going out to bid for all garbage service. So, when we come back in, if our... So when we come back in, if our service changes and our costs change, then we'll go back in and we'll be looking at that. Until we go out for RFP, until we have other agencies or other firms that are coming in and bidding for it, we do not know what the exact dynamics will be of our new sanitation contract.
Now, I understand. Thank you for that clarification. Did you have a piggyback question?
Oh, oh.
Oh, hang on, Rodriguez and then Hughes.
So, piggyback question. You brought up the patent. I'm fully aware of that. My vision personally with the rodeo grounds is to have a true partnership, not, it's great to have a, I can't remember the word, concierge, concessionaire, that's the word, to have, to be able to run the facilities and do all of that. So your position is fantastic. But I would like to have other, I don't want to call them advertisers, but other sponsors to where they can help, where they own the land, maybe we own the land. I don't, I don't care. Somebody owns the land, somebody owns the facilities, but we've got partnerships that are bigger than just the Town of Florence, or bigger than, you know, something that is just one person. You know what I'm saying? It's something, so when I have the vision of the rodeo grounds, I have the vision much bigger than that. So that's why I don't like the BLM land, is because they will never, the state is never going to come down and help us financially or physically build the rodeo grounds, regardless of us having the patent for it. So that was why I have an issue with that location. So that's a whole, again, sidestep, but just FYI, that's where I'm coming from with that.
Councilmember Hughes, did you have a piggyback on that?
Yeah. The 14-288 does include the trash, right? I think it was water and the monthly 112 was in that 14-288. Is that correct?
Yes. The town currently isn't billed for that service.
But that was, that will take care of the garbage for the year.
Correct. Correct. And anything above and beyond that, we've talked with the foundation and they would be more than happy to take care of anything above and beyond the monthly service that we're getting now.
Okay. Okay.
All right. I just had two more questions and I'm going to kick it over to the left. So... My glasses are good. On item H, who is, it goes into like emergency medical services, large events, is there going to be any impact to our public safety in regards to this? Because I know wherein there's junior parada or other events, you guys have contracted out with somebody and brought somebody in. Is that going to be your continued practice?
Well, so if you remember last year, the town...
For junior parada?
Yes, took care of the junior parada. So...
What about the other events?
Events since then have been the association that is, that is holding the event that we are partnering with. We did have an accident in the first bull riding that we had, and the Town of Florence did respond, as well as AMR did respond. But we also had onsite EMTs as well. And that's, that's just part of the organization that we partner with. That's their requirements in their organization, is that they're onsite.
Okay.
Now, in the event that we have to, depending on the size of the event, which I assume somebody would let us know what the requirements would be, then of course, we would, we would plan for that, for that type of an event, so.
Okay. So I'm going to ask Cliff. This is where I'm going to wake you up.
Yeah.
We're waking him up?
Yeah, we're waking him up. His eyes were closed. Sorry. All right. So is there anything in the contract that would be binding to us regarding the scale of events? Because I grew up in an area where, if, much like Florence, where if we had events and such, there would be, you know, town resources that could be there or that would not be there. But understanding how both our police and fire plan, we definitely need to make sure that we're keeping an eye on our resources and where they're being allotted to and how.
Yeah, there's, Mayor, there's nothing in the contract that specifically limits or really addresses how emergency services will be provided per event. There is a requirement that the individual users for events will have to sign waivers. I mean, it's pretty detailed and tight as far as protecting the town from liability, along with the insurance and filling out accident forms if something occurs, as just mentioned. But I think the RFP and the contract contemplate that the staff and the foundation will work together and plan out as far as, you know, special standby procedures that will be needed depending on the event and the size of the event, which will change over time, I think is what's assumed. So that's part of that collaboration as far as, that's contemplated in the contract and the RFP. I think by having that board that you all have mentioned, is that it's a management collaboration essentially, which even includes input on a permanent location for the facilities. So it really depends on, you know, our staff, their staff, and then what is needed per event.
Okay. Thank you. Because I recall reading something, and maybe Ms. Garcia can help me with this one, where when there's like kids on bulls or there's certain events that are going on, doesn't emergency medical have to be on standby?
So, in the years of Florence is doing rodeos, it depends on which rodeo association is coming in and what their particular rules are. So AJ...
AJRA.
AJRA will have a requirement that two medics and I believe a backboard is present. And, and so we've always gone with the standard rules. And then if somebody needs to be transported, then a lot of times it's a 911 call, but that immediate response is already provided for when they're doing this and they have those kids out there. Number one priority is to making sure that the association has those people onsite for those kids, and that becomes underneath their standard guidelines and the way that they work together.
Okay.
Anything you guys would like to add to that?
I think your fire chief had something to add.
Hang on, I can't hear you speak.
I was just saying, I liked all of Allison's other suggestions though, so I want to make sure that all of the other staff recommendations that you had pointed out, that those are addressed, because we haven't even touched on those. So I just wanted to make sure that when we, whatever motion we decide to make, we make sure that it's complete and address those other things that were staff recommendations.
Mayor, I would like to notate that Chief Wall pulled the microphone over to him, so it seems like he might have something to add to this. Oh, nope, he turned us down.
Good eyes. All right. Councilmember Neal.
I honestly think Lisa said it best, why don't we put it to staff to come up with some numbers? Because honestly, just to be real, it feels like we're sitting here trying to tell Tom Brady how to win a football game. You know what I mean? That it's, I don't think we should be telling him anything, honestly, but understand as a town council, we have to do so. I just truly feel that it should go to Lisa, our staff. We should look at numbers. We should put together where we can get this money from to help them, because it's junior parada that, at the end of the day, and that's it. Like Judy said, it's the, one array is here every year, junior parada. There shouldn't be a question. Just get where we get the money from, from whatever kind of budgets we got, and get it done. It's too much talking.
Which, for clarification, it's not just junior parada, it's a list of amazing events each month. There's like 14 of them? So we just wanted to make sure that we're...
It's in great hands. I truly believe we just need to sit down and get the money and communicate with the man, communicate with the group. I mean, why haven't we done that? Why are we at this point right now, instead of this already being worked out? I don't feel that that money that they're asking for is too much. I really don't. Let Lisa and the staff do what they need to do and let's go there. We've been on this for 40 minutes now, however long.
Mayor, members of council, appears that council would like to make a motion. So if you wanted to make a motion to enter into this contract and tell staff to come up with the 14,000 and change, and, and we would do so based on that. And what we'll do is we would want you to say that that amount would be available until such time that the water solution has been provided and it's solved.
Awesome.
That means that every fiscal year until that time, it would be the same level of funding.
Also on the location. The grandson just said, we love it, we like it.
Unfortunately, that's not on our agenda.
Yeah. We'll be happy to bring that back to the very next meeting.
Yeah. But I would like to say that I think it's important, although we have been on this for however long, it's important that every council member has the opportunity to ask questions and that it's very clear so that when we make our decision, we are making it as an informed body of seven, and that our public is very aware of these questions and these answers. So although they may seem a little repetitive, to me, I've gained a lot of knowledge and a lot of information that maybe I didn't have or I thought I knew, but I didn't know. So I'm not going to jump in front of Councilmember Anderson because he has been waiting a while for his second question, and then I will ask my second question. Proceed.
Well, my second question was more of a comment. The, one of the major reasons that we need the water is for dust control. And we talked about our CIP, and hopefully, when we do our CIP, we will address parking and some of the dust control. You know, we may take less water if we had a gravelled parking or gravelled streets or paved streets. So whenever we look at that site or the new site, we take that into consideration. That's my comment. Thank you.
And mine's a comment and a question. So my comment is, I have been out to the rodeo grounds since it was taken over, and I have seen the partnership of improvements that has been sweat equity. And I know that you guys have done a lot to improve those grounds with just your bare hands and getting qualified people out there to help make that. So for me, to invest in some water, I think is pulling our end of the partnership up to an even amount, because the amount of sweat equity that you've given, how do we put a dollar amount on that? And so I think that we're upside down still as the town, and we, we do have to take ownership for allowing the grounds to get into the condition it's in, allowing the well to get to the condition it's in. It's years, not, not something new, but it's been, it's been happening. And so I think that the town needs to take ownership in that and that we need to, like Councilmember Neal said, we need to find a way to fund this. So my question is, to council, what dollar amount are we looking at so that we can make our motion?
14-288 point something.
And I would, me, I'm a rounder, so I would say 15,000.
14.5.
Because I like to round things. I hate cents.
So 14, what, 5?
There's a motion, I thought. I'm waiting for a second.
Huh?
No, I asked for the dollar amount. We need to make the actual motion.
So you'll make, okay. I make, okay.
It's all on you, Judy. Don't mess up.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the Historic Florence Foundation as the concessionaire, and that we, as a town, will, the council wants to provide water to their events in the form of 14,500 dollars. That will be taken from somewhere.
Somewhere.
Somewhere, you'll find it, I'm sure. And it will be that amount until the, the water issue has been fixed. And, is that it?
We have to add a...
Once the well isn't, once the well is in?
And once the well is in, then, then it will be on the Florence Foundation to pay for the water.
And also, other staff, staff recommendations, as suggested. Because she had other suggestions in her staff report, so. Sorry, my mic wasn't on. So I was just adding that staff recommendations that we didn't discuss, that those would all be applicable.
Well, the staff didn't recommend a lot of things to the poor people, so I'm, I'm saying that council wants to side with the foundation to be a win-win with them and help them succeed. So whatever, I think that besides the money that they need, I'm not really quite sure what, what else was there.
The other recommendations are not, the other recommendations are not needed to be within the contract.
Okay. I second.
Got the agreement.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Good. Who?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Discussion approval, disapproval of adopting resolution number 1831-22. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence. Pinal County, Arizona, approving the conditional use permit for a self-storage facility by B and S Equities LLC for Assessor Polycell number 20204042H located at the southeast corner of State Route 79 and Florence Heights Drive in Florence, Arizona, 85132. At this time, we'll call forward Ms. Maricela Benitez.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, I bring back today the conditional use permit for the self-storage at the southeast corner of Florence Heights Drive and 79B. Now, this application was brought before the town council on July 5th for its first review and action. It also held a public hearing on this item. After discussion and the presentation, it was found by the town council that it was not to be denied, but it was to be sent back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review. The reason it was sent back was for the main reasons of clarification on operational hours, access by the customers, and limitations on the storage items, and the overall wall Now, this was the overall site plan of what was proposed by the conditional use permit. So self-storage facilities are allowed within a B2 or highway business commercial with a conditional use permit. So this is, would be the overall design with the incorporation of the roundabouts that would be coming through in the near future. Now, what's included in this project, just know, just to refresh, 443 self-storage units and in an approximately 500 square foot office building for employees to use in order to help customers. Security cameras will be provided for surveillance. There will be two access points from Florence Heights, as well as the third from State Route 79. Now, there are variety sizes within these units, but 20% of them will be air-conditioned. The applicant is looking to enclose this facility with a six, or a little bit over six-foot-high masonry block wall. Now, when it went to Planning and Zoning Commission, I asked them if they had any suggestions. They hadn't concerns. Now, what mainly came out of it, these are just some original findings, what were the main suggestions from the Planning and Zoning Commission? They were this. First, just some scrivener errors remedied within the rules and regulations that have been attached to your staff report. The applicant has provided some stipulations and requirements that he will enforce on customers. A second concern was the wall design. Now, the wall design, they agree, can be further looked into when it goes to designer view if the CUP is approved. But the wall design they saw, which is here, so originally, this is what they had brought forward last time. And then this is what we're looking at now. So it's a little over six feet. Something that was agreed upon at the Planning and Zoning Commission was a 10-foot-high wall was excessive. The land is a little bit taller, so seven, eight-foot wall also is kind of seen as excessive. One of the main comments the applicant put forward is he doesn't want to build a prison around his facility. And he believes a little bit over six-foot will still provide the safety, but also not provide... safety, but also not provide something that's just a wall. Now, some other changes that the commission suggested was that the wall design itself maybe take some influences from what's found in the downtown historic area. Now, the changes that the applicant brought was the office was to assist customers Monday through Saturday between eight AM and five PM. That office will be closed on Sunday. However, the facility itself will remain open for authorized cardholders or customers from six AM to nine PM daily, so Monday through Sunday, they will have access. It will be rented from month to month, and the rules and regulations within the packet will help set the standard for what customers should expect they can and cannot put within their storage facilities. And town staff has included these conditions within the staff report, that these rules be followed, and the manager, the applicant, is... And agree that if any of those regulations or requirements are broken, that that person who owns the storage facility will be removed from using that unit. So again, this is the wall. With that being said, staff conditions in terms of the wall and the times are number nine and sixteen. We also added a couple of other requirements, such as there will not be a storage of recreational vehicles, no RVs, no work trucks, no construction or farm equipment, no ATVs or motorcycles, none of that heavier machining. This is just self-storage. They also had the requirement that no one can live in these, or house pets, or nothing that lives. Something I do want to bring to the attention of the council, before we get to the recommendation, is that public hearings were carried out. At the meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we did have one resident who was against it. They did not see it as good use at that area. We did have the owner of the apartments next door spoke up and said that they were in approval of this project, as they saw it was something beneficial for their tenants to have a place to store their stuff, as they don't have the regular storage sizes that you would in a single-family residential home. At that meeting, we also did have someone else who stood up and spoke against it. But since then, I have not had any other public speak up about the item. With that being said, the Planning and Zoning Commission did forward a recommendation of approval with the listed conditions within the staff report. And tonight, town council may approve this conditional use permit, or they may deny the conditional... Excuse me, the conditional use permit with the listed conditions. With that, I'm ready to take any questions.
Councilmember Anderson.
I had someone ask me today, does this affect our welcome sign?
This project specifically will not affect the welcome sign. The roundabout project may affect it, but this facility will not.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So when I look at this, I look at the three access points, two of them being within close proximity to the roundabout. And so I'm just concerned about congestion that that causes, because we are... The purpose of a roundabout is to have a continuous flow. And so with those two entrances or exits right there at those roundabouts, especially in the... Both of them are in sections where there's the median preventing traffic, separating traffic. I'm concerned with that traffic flow, and just wondering if Mr. Solis has viewed that, and if he has an opinion on how that may or may not impact us.
This project was coordinated... This project was coordinated with the property owner during the actual roundabout project. Mr. Baker reached out to us numerous, numerous times about his access points, and the town looked at our access standards, as well as Ada's, to essentially grant them their two points of access off of Florence Heights, as you indicated, one being a right-in, right-out that is median-controlled, and then one that is a full access point that meet our standards. I'm not a hundred percent positive if he's obtained his access point through Ada. I know they were working on it, but I haven't seen anything since. It's very possible he's gotten his approvals. So it does meet all of our access standards, and it was looked at very carefully.
Have you gotten your approvals, sir?
The question was, have you gotten your Ada approvals?
No.
Okay.
No.
Still working through the process.
So if denied by Ada, if those approvals are not approved, then what would be the outcome of that?
So the town is required to grant an access point for the property. That's a legal entitlement. He has to have some form of access, and so this was negotiated as part of his project. But as part of his project, again, he will be submitting a traffic impact analysis to make sure that these driveways function correctly. But it was, like I said, it was part of a negotiation with right-of-way, and a much bigger item than just the driveway access. But again, the applicant has worked with Ada and the town extensively.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, so he has not received his access points from Ada's. Again, this is a conditional use permit. Conditional use is... This isn't what originally what it was zoned for, but town council has the ability to say yea or nay in regards to this. In reviewing the documentation, I really don't see a whole lot of change from the time it was first presented to us to now, to be very frank. It's the same information with some changes from planning and zoning in regards to some suggestions.
Correct. So the overall facility and how it was going to work hasn't really changed. It was just the main questions that came up in the last meeting about times for access. Was there any rules or regulations installed, which at that time there weren't? So the applicant came up with some rules and requirements set for people, and then there was also discussion on the wall. Those were some of the main reasons why it was pushed back to planning and zoning.
I'd like our council to consider tabling this item. I'm not making the motion, but I would like us to consider tabling this item pending Ada's permit for the access point.
Some moved. Can I say that?
You can make the motion, I just made a suggestion.
Yeah, and I think that that's very warranted. To me, I cannot get on board with the access points that I'm seeing here on the screen. I mean, if Ada approves them, then good for you, that'd be great, but to me, that looks like an accident waiting to happen. I don't think that's going to work for me. But so pending, I would like to make a motion to table this item pending Ada's approval of the access points on the parcel. Second.
Motion and a second. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you.
No.
Can we back up a little bit, madam?
No, what I'm saying, sir, is there was a motion?
Can we back up a little bit?
No.
Okay, Ada has approved...
Okay, you're out of line. I'm going to ask our officer to step in.
Ada has approved all of the entrances.
I've never done this before, but I'm asking our officer to step in. We had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Item C, discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with Brown &amp; White Inc., using the cooperative contract through the city of Tucson, number two zero two two seven five dash zero two to replace four sections of guardrail on Arizona Farms Road at Cooper Road where it crosses the CAP canal. The contract amount shall not exceed two hundred and eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-five cents. The proposal for one hundred and eighty-one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty-six cents, with a fifteen percent contingency of twenty-seven thousand one hundred and ninety-one fifty-nine cents. Mr. Chris Solis.
So I'd like to start off with a little bit of project background. Casually, when you're driving by this area, you may say, "This guardrail looks the same as any other guardrail," and you probably wouldn't be that incorrect in seeing that. If you stop and pull off the side of the road, you will see that each end treatment has been damaged. So those end treatments are part of a bigger system, and because these are so outdated, they don't meet federal standards anymore, and so we can't incorporate a new-style end treatment with the current guardrail, if you will. So we have to replace these comprehensively, and all four sections were damaged. We have been able to get some funding through our insurance, and we are going to be pursuing additional. But regardless of that, the town does need to correct these deficiencies in a timely manner. This is one of the early projects with our new procurement division or procurement officer, and so guardrail's a very specialized industry, and there's not a lot of contractors in the state. The contractor that we used probably about five years ago is out of business, and so we tried finding all the different contractors through cooperative contracts, because there's no design out there, and we needed somebody to understand the standards that the town was discussing. So a standard guardrail under current MASH standards requires about sixty-three to sixty-five feet, and we only have fifty feet to work in. So this is a very specialized system that is, I guess what you would say, a limited length or a limited right-of-way impact, and it will be five zero feet, fifty feet. This contractor is very qualified, probably the biggest in the state at doing these. They hold contracts with Ada and numerous other counties, towns, cities. So that handles the procurement and the need. Are there any questions on this project?
Any questions for Mr. Solis on this project? Seeing no such movement, we need a motion.
I make a motion that we approve to enter into a contract with... Oh, shoot, I totally lost my space. We're on C, right?
Brown &amp; White Inc.
Sorry. Right, Brown &amp; White Inc.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item D is discussion approval, disapproval to adopt resolution number eighteen thirty-five dash twenty-two. This is a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, declaring and adopting the results of the primary election held on August second, 2022. Ms. Lisa Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, before I start the canvas, I did want to acknowledge each of the five candidates. They ran an exceptional race, and as you can see by the results, it was very close. So we appreciate everyone who took their time to get to know those candidates and vote in our election. The two thousand and twenty-two election results are as followed. Penile County reported that the total vote cast...
Ms. Garcia?
No.
So sorry.
Sorry. That the total votes cast in the primary election was three thousand five hundred and seventy-seven, out of a voter base of eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-one. That means Town of Florence voter turnout for the primary election was thirty-nine point eight-three percent. It is slightly higher than our two thousand and eighteen voter turnout. Town does not compare the two thousand and twenty-two election to the two thousand and twenty election, because it is a presidential election in two thousand and twenty. It brings out a different voter element, and so what we do is we compare vote to vote. I do want to tell council that on page two of your RCA, there is the seven precincts that are now within the Town of Florence city limits. When you go through the results that I've provided, I have provided the total counts received, showing both the election day totals, the early days, early ballot totals, and the provisional ballots. And also, we break it down even farther to show both the candidates for each one of the precincts, as well as the proposition at each one of the precincts. So with that, we'll go ahead and canvass the results. Nicobu Chulata did receive one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four votes. Michelle Cordes did receive one thousand five hundred and seventy-four votes. Judy Hughes did receive one thousand four hundred and sixty-five votes. Jose Mo Molinaldo did receive one thousand six hundred and eleven votes. Cassandra Shurm did receive one thousand four hundred and eighty-three votes. On proposition number four fifty-nine, total yes votes were two thousand four hundred and fifty-seven. No votes were eight hundred and twenty-six. That does mean that the proposition did pass, and tonight, we are passing out certificates of elections to Nicobu Chulata, Jose Molinaldo, and Michelle Cordes. So if you could please come and get those, and then I would ask council to enter into a motion to adopt the resolution. And if anyone has any questions. I do want to say special thank you to Penile County, who did discount the charges of the election's services and have them be free for all municipalities for this election due to the problems that did exist. And so we do want to thank them for that. While the members of our council have been elected, due to state law, they will not be sat until after the general election. Traditionally, council does the swearing-in ceremony the first meeting of the month, and we issue special thanks to those who are coming off council, as well as in an introduction. And with that, we are planning for the same event to be the first week of December.
Well, I think Kathy Adams said it best when she said, "Everybody ran a very nice election." So congratulations, and it does take a lot to put your name out there and to be willing to serve the community. I also want to say thank you to everybody who supported the proposition. That means a lot for our town moving forward. With that, is there any other comments, questions, or do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We adopt resolution one eight three five dash two two.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is our manager's report. Ms. Garcia.
Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to bring your attentions to one staffing change that has occurred this week. I'd like to congratulate Harvey Kraus, who is now serving as our Community Development Director, and say that I have complete and total faith in his abilities and looking forward to him serving in that capacity. He's our Community Development Director slash Economic Development Director, and we will have the position of senior planner out on the streets looking for applicants. And so just wanted to make sure that everyone is aware of that, and if anyone has any questions, please come by my office, happy to talk to you.
Thank you. This is our second call to the public. We're now open for call to the public. I do have one request to speak. Mr. Harold Christ.
Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor Cordes, I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and dwell quickly on the wonderful, wonderful piece of property that you're sitting on here and what's going on behind here. This, when we started working on this with council members and members from all over Florence, and working on Territory Square, how many years ago was it? Ten years, something at least? That's the best piece of property I've been developing all of my life, somewhere in the United States. That's the best piece of property that is left, certainly in Penile County and maybe in the whole state. in the whole state. It's got more potential. It's got all the upsides that you could possibly want. You had an original architect with Vernon Swaback, who was a protege of Frank Lloyd Wright, who put a lot of himself into that project. And I hope as you guys progress along with how this is all coming together, that you'll keep some of those components in there. Think of what Tempe is today. I know some people will say, gee, we don't want to look like Tempe, nor do I. I live here. I'm not sure I want to see all the glass buildings and so forth, but there are some things with the river. There are some things that, that would add to the trail systems. There are some things that would add to the type of housing and so forth that you're going to attract. Growth is going to come whether you want it or not. And the issue is, it's up to you all to make sure it's the kind of growth that you want. And that's, that's what can make this very, very special. So I hope that as this progresses, that you've got a strong staff, you've got some people here who really know what they're doing. And as you call upon them to, to pull those pieces together, you'll have something that this town will be very, very proud of. So thank you. That's all that I wanted to comment on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Christ. And we have Mr. Beatty online. If we can go ahead and unmute him.
Madam Mayor, are we good?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor and Council, I think just a little bit of follow-up to my previous question and, and actually just a question to the council is how can we get the Town of Florence to support local businesses by, by buying local? We brought this up at a council meeting a little less than a year ago and, and staff was directed to make an effort to, to buy, buy local and send out RFPs. And since that, that's not happened at all. I heard, heard the reasons or excuses, or reasons that this last ones did not go out. But as soon as I went to a local vendor, they said absolutely, they could have, they could have at least answered the RFP and signed up to be a provider for the town, I guess is my understanding is the one that Ms. Garcia was talking about. So we do have the people out there that are interested, local business keeping the money here, $50,000 for a local, a local business with, I am assuming you guys would pay tax. I don't know that for sure. Mr. Solis would be able to say that, but that would be a huge bonus to our coffers. And I just, I really don't understand why we continue to not to, to use past contracts and cooperative contracts. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Call to the council.
I just wanted to talk about Florence PTO burrito sale. Y'all come get some groceries. You gotta order by Friday, the 9th, and pickup is the 26th. It's $5 apiece for the burritos. I know I'm gonna be eating. I hope everybody else go get some groceries. Congratulations to all the people that got elected and it was a very, very nice race because mine was downright horrible, honestly. It was, it was very nice to see some respectable people that could sit down in a room and actually talk instead of acting like kids. And that's pretty much all I got to say. You order from Lynda at the junior high on the 9th and pickup is the 26th.
Hang on, hold up. What is it?
19. Did I write it down wrong? I wrote it down wrong. I'm sorry, Ricky.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
I just want to congratulate all the candidates that ran for office and congratulate the ones that won. So it was a good race. I said during the campaign, I was glad I was not running because we had a lot of good candidates running. That makes our town a better town. Thank you.
Recently, I went to a bank to try to get some money for some projects that I want to do. And I was talking to the banker there and he's all like, well, where do you live? And I said Florence. He goes, are they still really hard on businesses coming over there? Because I heard that it's really hard to get a business to come to Florence. I'm kind of ashamed of what we just did to this owner here because we just pushed the business away possibly. I don't know if I would come back. We need to, I don't know, I think we need to fix that one. I think that's all I got to say.
Congratulations to everybody that won. You guys can do a great job. That's all I got.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
I'll start off with my low note because honestly, I'm very frustrated, not happy with what transpired tonight on multiple levels. I feel like, first of all, I'd say I do agree with Roger. We've had given this direction many times about using local businesses. And when we're voting on it on the floor, it's a little too late for us to go about to put an RFP for something that's needed right now. We gotta get the pool chemicals in there now. We're in the end of summer. So to be discovering that this wasn't an RFP at this point, very frustrating. The fact that we didn't even give them the opportunity, we didn't even have those conversations with them. I'm sorry, I don't want to harp on you on the floor. I'm trying to restrict myself and I apologize. But then the conduct that happened today with that business, it almost moves me to tears because it's so frustrating to me. And I'm not saying I'm supportive of his business. I do believe in safety first. That's where my motion came from, came from the heart of wanting the safety from our citizens. And looking at this roundabout, it does not seem safe. If ADOT said okay, then okay, so be it. But, and that's not my place to judge. I don't know traffic flows. I'm not going to pretend I do. But I'm very disgruntled with the conduct that happened today. It's very frustrating to me to feel like our community says we want to support businesses and regardless of what they are, it comes in with a prejudice of whether we're going to vote yes or no, and it feels like that, that isn't very heard. And I feel like every business deserves to be heard. So I'm very frustrated and I just wanted to express that. But then also, I'll hand in my high note because I need to refresh myself right now. So congratulations to everybody who did get elected. You'll be welcomed into the frustrating world of being on council very soon. To everybody who ran and unfortunately did not make it, my heart goes out to you. I know that you guys all put your heart and soul into your passion for the town and I hope that passion remains strong. So I'll end there. Have a great night.
Vice Mayor.
So I will go along with what Mr. Mendoza and Councilmember Rodriguez said, and it is frustrating, it's upsetting to see a business owner upset with us, but I will say that we did ask the question if ADOT had approved, if he had approval and he said no. So he was given the opportunity to answer that question and then once he realized we tabled it. So it wasn't even a rejection, it was a table, hey, let's wait and see. Because we all know what happens when traffic isn't thought of and then later the public comes back to us and says, why didn't you ask this question? Well, now we're asking that question and we're not going to move forward until we as a body of seven feel comfortable with the answer. We may not all agree, but we're going to wait until we feel comfortable with that answer. Chief Walters, I apologize because I called you Chief Walz earlier and I wanted to correct that and I don't know where my mind was. I was just like trying to make sure that we didn't miss you if you had something to say. So I did want to correct that. And lastly, I did attend the tamale event at the Windmill Winery. And for a first-time event, every first event has some hiccups, but it was spectacular to see how many people showed up. They like couldn't keep up with the people and they were, we had to wait like 30 minutes for the tamales to be finished steaming and they had to do that several times. And it literally was a group of what, maybe 10 people that put this event together and served the public and, and did their best to put a great event forward that is going to help with arts in Florence, something that Councilmember Rodriguez supports wholeheartedly. So I just want to say kudos to the citizens that put that event together. I'm extremely excited to attend the next one and I know that it'll just like every event that we have hosted in this town, they get better and better and better. So I look forward to that. And congratulations to all the candidates that made it onto town council. Congratulations to everybody that ran because if you didn't know, now you know how difficult it is and it's not as easy as it seems when you're sitting in the stands. There is a lot that goes into it, keeping track of records and keeping track of a lot of things, dealing with hateful comments from the public and all of that good stuff. I have made some very good friends while I've been on council and I look forward to maintaining those friendships. So thank you.
All right. I will be brief this evening because many of the comments have already been stated that I wanted to communicate. I did want to say thank you for the organization. Florence Historic Preservation Foundation, no, wrong one, hang on. Historic Florence Foundation. We have many foundations that have come about in our community, many people that are wanting to make a positive difference and give to the community. So I do want to acknowledge that and say thank you and for be willing to engage in that conversation. A lot of questions were asked and I wanted to make sure that they were acknowledged and heard. In regards to the business owner as well, on the floor, when I had made the comment earlier, you know, I've never had to actually ask somebody to stop and nor would I. That's not typically our nature. The business owner was not told no. It was tabled and we look forward to when it comes back before us. And again, as it was already communicated, safety is important and that's our ultimate goal, is making sure we can have businesses that are safe and move forward in the community. We do have some items on our executive session this evening that we are going to be discussing. And again, if you notice, on our executive session, one of those items also tends to focus on discussion or consultation regarding right-of-way issues. So there's some interesting things out there and we hope to continue making positive changes. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same side?